Good evening. I want to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for October 11th, 2022, to order. Quick note, we will be going into executive session and we will return to regular session at 6:00, no later than 6:00 p.m. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chair, I move that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, we go into executive session to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, and the Chair has determined that an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, and further that we enter executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a, Paragraph 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and contract negotiations for non-union personnel vis-à-vis the fire chief.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session as read, roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It is a vote, and I so declare it.
Okay. He's just enjoying that way too much.
I love it.
It's really why we come, so you can sit.
You good? Good evening. I want to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for October 11th, 2022, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we discussed contract negotiations, our collective bargaining with all town unions, and we also discussed strategy session preparation for negotiations with the fire chief for a new contract. No decisions were made tonight, and that will be ongoing. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sincere republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public comment and announcement?
Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Just a couple of fun things happening in support of Halloween. The Chamber has partnered with the Cape Cod Theater Company, Harwich Junior Theater, for Trolley to Adams Family. You can find information on our website and buy tickets that way or by calling me. It's October 22nd and 23rd. It's a trolley from the Chamber to the theater, and we have costume characters and all kinds of fun stuff. And then two of our local churches and members are doing Halloween things as well, right here in Harwich Center. October 29th, the First Congregational Church is doing a free kids' Halloween party from 2:00 to 4:00, and then the Pilgrim Congregational Church on Sunday, October 30th, is doing their annual trunk or treat. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Gomert, Chief of Police. Just very quickly, I wanted to give the board a heads up that the regional SWAT team has reached out to us to request use of the range on Depot Road, our range, on October 24th, from just about 11:00 a.m. for about, until about 3:00 in the afternoon. It's a part of their selection process. So I know we had agreed that I would give you a heads up if it was going to be outside agencies coming in there, so that's what's going on. October 24th, probably around 11:00 a.m.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief and the board?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to give an update. As I informed you, firefighter Diamond deployed to Florida.
I don't want Mary to yell at me. Would you state your name for the record?
Oh, David Blank, sorry about that. Firefighter Diamond, Eric Diamond, deployed with the Massachusetts Task Force One, the USAR Team, Urgent Search and Rescue Team, to Florida. He's on his way back. He should be in Beverly tomorrow. The last count I had was all the teams had made over 80,000 searches, had over 2,000 to 3,000 interpersonal contacts with people, and 10,000 waypoints throughout their journey. And that information's about a week old, so sure they did much more, they're wrapping up their mission there in terms of life safety. From the sounds of it, Florida's going to be cleaning up for quite some time to come. But just want to give the board an update on that, and as soon as he's home and in good shape, I'll let you know.
Thank you, Chief. We pass our thanks along, Terry.
Will do.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, unless you're reading those on the agenda.
Nope. I would rely on you for that.
Thank you. So the board, the next Board of Selectmen's meeting will be on Monday, October 24th, so skipping next week, and of course, next week, we have one week from today, the special town meeting, October 18th, starting at 6:00 p.m. at the Community Center. In your packet, we have the latest committee vacancies report.
Mary's going to do that one real quick.
All right, thank you. I'll hold on that.
Go ahead, Mary.
We talked, I think, at the last two meetings, trying to encourage people to apply for some of the committee positions. The town relies on committees for a lot of the work that gets accomplished, so we agreed we'd read them each week. So we have vacancies in agricultural, capital outlay, finance, forest, cultural, energy and climate action, housing committee, historical commission, planning board, real estate and open space, treasure chest, voter information, youth services, and zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, Mary. Joe?
Thank you. Additionally, trying to match it up with the agenda, I think I've missed that. Just a reminder that I will be hosting a community engagement forum on traffic and safety in Harwich Port. The board will recall this came out of the discussion with some of the business owners and property owners in that area. So the community engagement forum is set for Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, 6:00 p.m. at 204 Sisson Road, the former middle school. That's going to be a second-floor library. Again, it's a discussion on traffic and safety in Harwich Port, but it is open to any and all parties that are interested. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, as you folks can see in the agenda, the South Harwich Meeting House is presenting the masterpieces at the Meeting House, their Chamber series for 2022 and '23, and so they have a great event coming up this Sunday, October 16th, which is the Lighthouse Chamber Players, performing works by Hayden, Ives, and Schubert. Again, that's Sunday, October 16th, 3:00 p.m. at the South Harwich Meeting House. Tickets are available at the door and online, and for more information, you can check out the flyer in the packet or reach out to the friends at the South Harwich Meeting House. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town administrators and managers on Cape Cod were informed by the Barnstable County Regional Emergency Planning Council, or as we affectionately refer to it as the BCRPC. That's the group that gets together whenever there's a weather event, snowstorms and things like that. They have been partnering with the American Red Cross. So this weekend, this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., there is going to be a Shelter Cape Cod Program. It's called Cape Codders Helping Cape Codders Weather the Storm. And so they're having these events at various shelters throughout the Cape, and the first one is going to be at the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. So again, the first effort that they're doing, Shelter Cape Cod, is this Saturday, which if memory serves correctly, is October 15th, 10:00 a.m. at the tech school, and we'll have information if anyone's interested, but this is for anyone that's interested and able to help out the Red Cross. And as we know in Harwich, there's always a need for shelters, and it'd be great to get that building back online as a shelter through the American Red Cross. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? New business, vote to approve and sign the November 8th, 2022 state election warrant.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve and sign the November 8th, 2022 state election warrant as presented in our packet.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just one mention, and I know Emily would say this, is that there have been various time changes for various levels of elections over the last couple of years because of the pandemic. We are back to Tuesday, November 8th. It's going to start at 7:00 a.m. in the morning, and it's going to go until 8:00 p.m. at night as our regular routine used to be.
Excellent. Thanks, Don. Any questions from the board?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Vote to appoint a representative to the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board. Selectman Howell has been our representative and done a great job for us. We just noticed last week, or got a notice last week, that that term had expired, so it's on the agenda. Don, the only question I had is, how is that board made up, and does it make any sense for Dan Pelletier to be that representative, or is it all selectmen from other towns? Go.
Read my mind. It is all political people. It's either the town administrator or the select members. I am concerned, and I have remained concerned, and I've been pretty vigilant about everybody's equal there. There was a time where some of the towns that had already built their sewer systems out, like Falmouth, Barnstable, Orleans, Chatham, had felt they'd be first amongst equals. It fought really hard to get that to the point where everybody was equal and nobody was going to get an advantage over it, and we've gotten a considerable amount of money from them. There has been a recent push to try to do most of the business within the context of this smaller executive board, which is only some of the towns, and just give them as finished actions to the general management board. I'm totally against that. The two things actually are related. The reason that, there is no technical aspect to this. This all has to do with money and with the regulatory construct and who's eligible to get what. It's not about building anything. It's about getting money back from the taxes. I feel pretty strongly it should remain in a political, government-elected realm and not, there's only a few towns that use their town administrator. Everybody else uses a select board member.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Larry, any questions, comments?
Well, my comment, Don and I talked before, I do see this more as a policy board rather than a technical board that we're charged Dan with. I also, and I see we have some people here from the county, I saw this came in, but my concern is too that the way Cape Cod is, I guess, constructed, we can easily fall into clicks between Falmouth and Hyannis, which overrules the small towns. And lately, I've been concerned about the relationship, a little concerned about the relationship between the Cape Cod Commission and APCC as being close because...
You can't use acronyms.
The, boy, now you've lost me. Association of, what is it?
Association to Preserve.
Association to Preserve Cape. Thank you. Not to say they do good work, but there's some entanglement there between the, a lot of the work that goes out of the Cape Cod Commission goes through APCC, and yet they sit on the same executive board. And so I appreciate Don trying to look at that as well, so that we have full input into that board. So I'm in favor of keeping it as a selectman and a policy role, and in fact, well, I'll wait, I'll make a nomination sometime.
Thank you, Larry. Mary?
I'd like to nominate Don, since he knows a lot about it, and it sounds like you need that level of understanding of the players to participate effectively.
I'll second that.
Okay, nominated and seconded. Julie, any comments, sir?
No, I don't have any comments.
Don, are you okay with that?
I'm very okay with it, and just to put your fears at rest, I have, and you've seen that I have, tried to put Joe and Dan in the loop whenever I'm getting anything that's coming from them that's beyond what I'm looking to do policy-wise. If there's an implementation, they have to, they have to be involved, and they have been involved.
I think it's going well. The only thing I'd like to see, Don, is after those meetings, at the following Selectmen's meeting, under Selectmen's Report, just an update on what happened.
There haven't been any. That's my concern, is that this is becoming more and more of a smallish club within a club, and that's not how it was designed. It was designed to give a large pool of money that only the Cape got from its rentals, and all of the elected officials should be playing together in the same sandbox. So that's why you haven't heard anything, because there haven't been any meetings of all of us.
Maybe we'll do a future agenda item sooner rather than later of an action maybe the whole board can take to try and fix that.
Sure.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero? All right, we're on to our joint meetings. Presentation by Barnstable County Department of Human Services on opioid abatement funds. You can stand or you can sit, if you're more comfortable sitting, whatever makes you more comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, you're meeting jointly with the Board of Health, so if they do have a quorum...
So I'm jumping ahead.
They do want to identify themselves first.
Would the Board of Health want to come up? You can pull seats up to the end of the table and take these seats here, but join us if you would.
Kevin, you can...
And then whoever should call their, call a meeting to order since it was advertised? And I would just say, if Board of Health members are going to speak, just grab a microphone or move closer to a microphone. Sit at the table. If anyone will join you.
Don't worry about that.
If anyone's going to speak, Sharon, you'll just have to go to a mic. So Sharon, will you call the meeting to order?
Okay. Please. Now, be polite, Sharon.
Okay. We'll share this. All right, I'm calling to order the Board of Health meeting, sorry, the Board of Health meeting for October 11th, 2022.
And then, Mr. Chairman, you would just want, for the record, a roll call of the members present for the Board of Health?
Oh, okay. Sharon Flieger?
Kevin Dupont, present.
Roger Gallo, present.
Ben Hantone, present.
Okay.
Go ahead. Floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kate Lena. I am the Substance Use Prevention Program Manager with Barnstable County Department of Human Services. So thank you, chairpeople, for having me here tonight. I recognize your agenda's super packed, so I'm going to speak quickly. For that, I apologize. And I know I'm going to present a lot of information, so I wanted to start by, you know, kind of orienting. I know you received a packet of information with the slides, a memo with more information, as well as four supporting documents, just so you know what you have in your email to review, you know, after this meeting. So you've got a copy of the subdivision agreement that each municipality signed in agreement to participate in this opioid settlement that I'll be speaking about. You have an estimate of what each municipality should be receiving over the next 18 years, and I think this has been updated, so I can get that, those updated numbers. A menu of program examples that I'll go over a little later in my presentation, and then just a resource reference page with even more information if you have questions afterwards. And just a note about the role of the county kind of with this initiative. These funds are not being awarded by Barnstable County, so we're not really able to offer kind of ongoing technical assistance, but I do see my role as a connector to, you know, making sure that you have all the information you need to make decisions that are best for the town of Harwich. So we'll present the topic, introduce the information, and then encourage you to make, you know, those good decisions. So with that, I'll jump right into presentation. I remember to point at the right, the right spot. So back in 2021, Mass. Attorney General Maura Healy announced a $26 billion settlement. So that's a federal settlement agreement with opioid distributors and manufacturers for their role in the over-prescribing of opioids, with $500 million coming directly to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with the intent to provide relief to people struggling with substance use disorder. So these funds are provided directly to individuals as well as their family members, to towns, to cities, to counties, as well as to the Mass. Department of Public Health. To cities and towns, the funds are going to be dispensed in yearly disbursements, like I mentioned, over the next 18 years. So this is not kind of a one-time payout, you know, it's an ongoing, consistent amount of funds that will be coming into the different towns. In addition to financial penalties, industry changes were also required, which are designed to prevent this from ever happening again. And to support this work, the Mass. Department of Public Health has created, as you see on number five here, that Mass. Opioid Recovery and Remediation Fund Advisory Council. You'll see it kind of in the news and mentioned as the ORRF, O-R-R-F. The council includes representation from all over the Commonwealth, including someone from the Falmouth Human Services Department, Susie Hotman. So we do have representation right here on Cape Cod, which we know is really important, getting the needs of Cape Codders up to the state. So some guidelines from the state itself, the spending of these funds, they're encouraging towns to pool the funds as much as possible. At the very least, communicate with neighboring towns on, you know, what your endeavors related to substance use look like, but for some of the towns that are receiving smaller amounts, pooling those funds will really increase your impact, be able to spread that programming as far as it can go. Funds cannot be used to fund care that's already being reimbursed by the state, so something like Mass. Health or BSAS, the Bureau of Substance Addiction Services, but funds can support these reimbursed services in other ways that help meet the needs of These seven broad topics here are the requirements for, are what the state is requiring municipalities to spend the funds are. So it, they cannot go into a general fund and go to, you know, for example, renovate conference rooms, or, you know, the state is really paying attention to making sure these funds are being spent on substance use, and that they are going to directly impact people with substance use disorder, their family members, folks in recovery. So I'm not going to go into all of these seven just out of interest of time for tonight, but you do have more information in the memo that I included, as well as in that subdivision agreement, and they have examples for each of these. And if anyone has questions about, you know, any of these ideas, kind of at the end, these broad topics, I'm happy to answer any of those. But what I did want to go over are recommendations from the Regional Substance Addiction Council. So the Regional Substance Addiction Council, also known as the RSAC, is a group of community members, providers on the Cape, who work in the substance use field, all areas of the field of substance use, and get together on a monthly basis to make sure that we're all coordinating and communicating on our efforts, and to make sure we have a regional approach to this topic. So these are recommendations that were collected through community meetings, workgroup meetings, and this, as well as the next four slides that, again, out of interest of time, I won't go into, all came from community members about the needs of Cape Codders related to substance use, as well as what the evidence tells us, you know, is really working. So similar to the state guidance, you'll see that number one, pooling funds and collaborating area municipalities. We really want to make sure that, you know, we understand that substance use knows no town boundaries. It makes sense and is good practice to collaborate with our neighboring towns and municipalities. Secondly, making sure that we're involving people directly impacted by substance use disorder in the conversation of how to use these funds. So, you know, making sure people who are actively using substances, people in recovery, their family members, their children, we really want to, you know, make sure that these voices are heard in that decision-making, as well as involving any substance use coalitions or human services committees that your town might have. And I'm not sure, I don't think Harwich has a substance use committee currently, but if that's something that you're interested in getting started, I'm more than happy to, you know, help with that transition, that startup phase. And then lastly, we recommend utilizing the evidence base and the data to create plans for spending that will most directly impact people affected by substance use disorder and their loved ones. These funds are uniquely required to be spent on the topic of substance use and give us the real opportunity to be creative and proactive with our programming. So like I mentioned, the next four slides go into guidance, broken down by four topics within substance use, so prevention, harm reduction, recovery, and treatment. I'd like to invite you to review, excuse me, the end of the day, review these slides on your own time, but if folks do have questions about them, you know, I'm happy to answer them tonight or via email afterwards. So there's, you can see, there's a lot of information in these slides. But one thing that I did want to review is the Appendix C that you have in your packet there. So this is a menu of program examples. The spreadsheet includes example programs that could be focused on with these opioid settlement funds, so recognizing that, you know, we want to give you some concrete things that you may be able to vote on, you may be able to say, yes, this is something that our town needs. These programs are evidence-based, they've been identified by members of the community and key stakeholders and providers as interventions that are needed on Cape Cod. When you're looking through that spreadsheet, you'll notice that a couple of the program examples on there have a budget of $0 to the town. So part of the idea here is to encourage you all to not just look at this as, you know, how do we spend these settlement funds, but encourage you to utilize this opportunity to create a comprehensive substance use programming plan. So you've got, you know, you can include those free-to-you substance use programming options, as well as paying into the expansion of existing programs, as well as creating something new that may be on here, or might be something that, you know, the members of the board come up with on your own. And then lastly, I wanted to point your attention to that Appendix D, which includes a ton more information, lots of relevant contacts. So just to highlight a few on this side, that Opioid Recovery and Remediation Fund, they do have a website as well as an email that can answer questions directly from members of the community. I am not an expert on local finance law. You all probably have more information on that than I do, but there is a contact for that as well as procurement-related guidance, and then how to pool funds with your neighboring municipalities. The Office of Local and Regional Health already has that infrastructure built in place, so, you know, if the boards do decide that pooling funds is something you'd like to do, that Office of Local and Regional Health can support that. And with that, I will end my presentation and open it up for any questions that come up.
Thank you very much.
And thank you so much. I really appreciate you allowing me some time.
We'll start with the Board of Selectmen, and then we'll move on to the Board of Health. Mary?
Are there any Harwich representatives on that regional, the RSAC?
There are. We actually have Sheila, Sheila House in the house. Sheila's been a member of the RSAC for, since the beginning, yeah, a very active member.
I guess from here, I guess the next step is for Harwich, so I'm assuming that's the Board of Health, Katie, and Sheila to suggest to us how we spend this money. I think that's our best resource.
Thank you, Mary.
That's all.
Julie?
Yeah, I guess, looking at a lot of the info in the report, it talks about, you know, a regional approach, which makes sense, will have more of an impact. It also talks about municipal reporting, and so I guess that that'd be another part of my question is, A, how do we go about this municipally, you know, in terms of reporting, but also how do we get the biggest bang for our buck to help those in need in all the categories cited? Has there been any thought to that on a regional basis yet?
There has, so the county also receives an amount per year. It's a very small amount, but our strategy so far is, you know, coming to meetings, hearing what the community thinks, you know, we all should be spending the funds on, being open to the opportunity and the idea of collaboration and pooling funds. So we haven't made any decisions on how, you know, our funds will be spent. We will be involving the RSAC members, as well as, you know, as many towns would like to participate as possible.
So I guess my other follow-up question, nothing that anyone could probably answer tonight, but I think it's such a need on the Cape for various mental health, as well as substance abuse, and so it'd be great to see all the different towns collaborate and get something that is local, because our kids and young adults and others are shipped off, and it's just, it's not feasible. So they're already against a lot of barriers, and then they're sent far away from home, so I'd love to see that approach.
Yeah, I would just like to second...
If you would, table or the microphone, just so the TV can capture you.
Absolutely. Kevin Dupont, member of the Board of Health. I would just like to second what Julie just said. As a nurse working in primary care, there is a massive need for mental and behavioral health here on Cape Cod. There's just not enough providers to service the population right now. I would definitely, you know, put my vote forward eventually, as we continue to discuss this, that that is a major need here, absolutely.
Thank you, yeah. And so much money that, you know, we don't normally find ourselves in receipt of, and if we could collectively work together, I think it's really important, so thank you for your presentations, great information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Don?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have a bunch of disparate questions and thoughts. I definitely agree with Kevin, and I mean, especially pediatric and adolescent psychiatry here is like about this big, as a...
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I have a, a bunch of disparate, uh, questions and thoughts, I definitely agree with Kevin, and I mean, especially pediatric and adolescent psychiatry here is like about this big as a service on Cape Cod, and it's always been a problem. Are they delineating how these funds get targeted, because there's both legal and illegal opioid, uh, uses, and the gateway for the legal ones are typically kids involved in sports, and then they keep using more and more of them, and they find themselves hooked at a certain point in time. But there's certainly a ton of illegal ones, uh, that are out there. I mean, our foster daughter just lost her birth grandfather two weeks ago from tainted fentanyl, uh, so there's a ton, I mean, you don't get a second or third shot at, at avoiding that. Now, we're really lucky to have Sheila, uh, as an asset in this town, but there are other stakeholders, like we've got a charter school, we've got a tech school, I'd like, I'd like to see the moving pieces kind of work together with each other, and that would be only to assume that only young people are involved in this, but I, I think Julie hit that, so there's a certain level of despondency on the Cape, which is why you've got that Samaritan sign when you cross over, I mean, uh, the Cape is a hard place to live in in the winter, and there's a lot of adult depression. I mean, how are we going to get our arms around this when there's so many disparate partners?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think recognizing that, recognizing the silos that exist, and creating opportunities for different, you know, folks working in different fields to communicate and work together is, is a really good first step. There's been a lot of movement, um, in addressing the over-prescribing, so, you know, within the settlement, there are industry changes that were required, um, as well as the use of the prescription monitoring program that I know has seen really great, um, results in decreasing the prescription of, of, you know, illicit opioids. So I think, you know, approaching it as, we, we can't just pick one thing to focus on, we need to look at all topics within substance use. That's part of my role, is, is working on, you know, all areas of substance use, so the idea is not to silo out prevention from recovery. I think more education is always a good thing, so, you know, utilizing some of the funds for education campaigns could be, could be a good way to go, um, I'll leave it there, but.
I'm looking more towards functionally, what, what do the, the endpoints look like? Who, who's working together?
Yeah, I mean, within the RSAC, we have representation from schools, from health centers, um, from the towns, from, I, I think it's a pretty, yeah, representative group there. In addition to that, I also sit on a school counselor's, uh, work group, a children's behavioral work group, um, I work with organizations further down Cape, I know I'm just one person, but, you know, the number of connections that I have to folks in the community, I think, you know, helps kind of bring people together. Part of, part of the goal of this, these presentations, I'm going around to all of the towns, presenting to select boards, boards of health, is to get this topic on people's minds, and get, and get people starting to think about it who maybe, you know, aren't already working in the field. So Chamber of Commerce should be a part of the conversation. You know, our police and fire are, are very much a part of the conversation already, but making sure that they're always pulled in. So I think, I'm, I don't know if I'm really answering your question, but, um, but I think it's, it's-
You brought the police and fire and a couple of other-
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's getting out there.
I'm just worried about getting everybody that has some interface with, you know, someone who's experiencing the problem, so that they can all talk to each other, as opposed to, I, I saw this last week, and you saw that last week, the, the only way this is going to work is if everybody works together, and frankly, since we have a regional school, I, I really would like to see this become more cooperative across town lines.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I think it could mean, you know, if, if it's not just a Harwich Substance Use Commission, maybe it's a mid-to-outer Cape, you know, um, working with a few different towns and, and having a commission that meets on a monthly basis with, you know, the partners that you're identifying, you know, should be in the room. I think that, that could be a good place to start, and that commission could be part of the decision-making for, you know, the spending of these funds, as well as the bigger picture.
The only worry I have is, because I've been around doing this for a long time, is, don't spend out the money before you actually get to the point of being able to address the particular problem. People, we have a, a real, uh, inclination to spend out money on studies and things, and then they never actually get to the point of treating anybody.
Yeah, well, and on that note, um, the county is in the middle of an assessment, and the next part of that will be presenting all of that information back to the town so that you can actually use it to make practical plans.
Thank you.
But there, yeah, really, really great points that you're making, important ones.
Thank you. Larry?
Thank you, Kate, for the excellent presentation. Uh, I agree with all the comments, of course, there, uh, I guess, I like the comments about pooling across, uh, you know, towns in, in the Cape. I guess one of my, uh, my wishes is, is that, you know, you've commented that you've talked to a lot of different groups, I know from Kevin and the Outer Cape Health, they're always talking to a lot of different groups. We have activities in, uh, the school, Monomoy, Sheila, I want to use that in-the-house comment, but I can't find a place for that. But somehow, we need to bring this informality into a formal process.
Yes.
And I'm hoping you, that these funds, and I appreciate, you know, being sure we get something done at the end, but my first plea would be to, to, to get your, to get your help, and the county's help, to bring this into a formal structure, that we actually are going in the same direction and, and getting someplace, rather than, I appreciate all the informal discussions, because I hear that from all different groups, but we need the next step.
Yeah, I, I agree, uh, we do need a next step, and I think part of what's tough on, you know, from my perspective at least, is, you know, each town kind of does things a little differently, um, so having, you know, a set process of, of how decisions are made, even, even just related to these settlement funds, um, so that, you know, the pooling can happen a little easier, I think is a, is a good idea.
Well, I, I think as a board, we're here to help you talk to other towns and see if we can get a structure going.
That's, yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Larry. Sharon? Go ahead, Mary?
I, I would think we would want our Harwich experts, many of whom are here in the room, to sit down first and talk about what they think we need, and then reach out to see if the, I don't want to get involved with a whole bunch of towns, and then we're all over the place. Let our local people decide what we need, and then see if some towns want to join us.
Yeah, and that's kind of my opinion, is that we have Monomoy, we have Sheila, we have the Outer Cape Health, we have the tech. We can look at Harwich first, but we need a, a more formal structure to go forward, is my point.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Sharon?
Hi, speaking to all you have just spoke to, um, and not really knowing what's going on in the town up to this point in regards to this, it sounds like with the money that's coming in from Barnstable, like we, as a town, we, and I'm going to say you as a board, it would be good to have you put together, or have us form a group, take one or two people and say, okay, what are all these outlying groups? All right, let's pull them together, and let's, let's, let's take it from the big, you know, from Barnstable, all right, and you come down, Harwich, Brewster, Chatham, and then what's the structure underneath that in order to start addressing some of these issues? Because I think if, if we had separate groups, that are all doing their own thing, and nobody's pulling it together, nobody knows what everybody is doing, they're going to be doing, you know, some of the same things, and not doing some of the things we need to do. So I, if I'm, if I'm understanding what's being presented here, when I read through this, was that's kind of what we're looking for, is what you're getting to is structure. And I think we need a structure before we can start working on the problems, because it's, it sounds like it's, it's like I've never heard of this group, which doesn't mean anything, but, um, I, I just think there's a lot of that that may be in the community, and I think once you can get something like that together, then you can present that to the people, so that the people know what's available to them, because I would bet that there are families out there that don't know what resources are available to them. That's just my thought on this, but I, I, I think we need, we need a structure before we just say we're going to get funds to do work on this thing. We need a structure.
And I guess I would encourage, you know, just remember that this is 18 years of funding, so even if that year one is taken to create that structure, to bring in the right partners, to have all the right folks around the table, and then create that plan, you know, for the next even five-year increments, um, I think that's a really, it's a good idea. The spend, the funds do need to be spent by the end of the fiscal year, as far as I understand at this point, um, but after that, you know, you've got, you've got a little time to kind of figure out what that plan looks like.
Sharon, do you want to call on each board member and see if they want to stand up or sit down and speak?
Anything more you want to say?
Good luck for pulling, Kevin.
It's not easy. Kevin Dupont, member of the Board of Health, um, you know, everything that's been said is really excellent points, I just, uh, you know, about connecting people with the programs that are available. One of the major programs, uh, that we have, just a few people where I happen to work, that do just that, is, is called the Navigator Program. I don't know if the town has something like that, uh, something that Katie and I could discuss later, I mean, they are such a resource to me at work, uh, helping people get in contact with those agencies and companies that aren't even going to be related, like specifically funded by this, but related to this, and helping them get in contact with those agencies. I think that, that communication and, and helping people get from point A to point B is going to be a massive part of this as well, um, and just want to second that, and, and certainly, you know, ready to discuss this and moving forward, there's a lot more here than could be discussed tonight, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
You guys think?
Listen.
You're listening. Matt?
Matt at Town Board of Health, um, I agree with Sharon, we do need some structure, because once you have structure, then you can start obtaining the goals that you, you want, you know, get to the finish line, figure out what game looks like, so.
What's that, Katie?
Good evening, Katie O'Neill, Health Director. Um, I might put Chief Gilmet and Sheila on the spot, if they don't mind too. We've had some preliminary discussions at the staff level, they've been really basic so far. We've definitely all come to the agreement that it's a multifaceted approach, it's not just going to be one or the other. The brief discussions that we've had is obviously prevention in the schools with the children, and I think Sheila can speak a little more to that. Um, and the other route that we had discussed briefly, um, is coming up with a substance abuse and mental health counselor. Yarmouth, Dennis, Barnstable Sandwich, and I believe one other town on Cape already has one on the police staff, and they really work as a navigator, so basically they go out, um, with the police department, and they help correct issues, instead of just arresting someone, they actually go out and they work as a navigator, and they connect them with different programs. But just as our basic discussions we've had so far, we thought that with the prevention programs would be a great use of the funds. Thank you.
Katie, I have, I have a question. Do you know if that navigator person in the different towns, are they under the town? Is, is it a town employee that's-
They're under the police, yes, they're a town employee, then they, they're associated with the police department.
Hi, Sheila House, I'm Director of Youth and Family Services. One of the things that Kate mentioned that I think is really important that I want to repeat is that they're doing a second assessment, the last one was done 2015, is that right? And so I think all of you are familiar with that assessment, it, um, substance use was, um, and addiction was studied under four different categories, treatment and recovery, the legal system, harms reduction and prevention. I'm, of course, very interested in prevention, um, you know, working with kids and stuff, and it's going to be really great when the data is available, which will be the spring sometime?
Probably mid-January.
Yeah, so that's going to be great to compare to, uh, the study that was done six years, six, seven years ago, and it'll also give us a lot of information about what's, um, what's needed in the county. And I do agree that there does need to be some kind of a structure, I mean, we used to have the Lower Cape, uh, Prevention Committee, Jan, was that what it was called? Jan Magory, my colleague is here, um, and it was Chatham and, and Harwich, both, and so we, we met to discuss what the needs were out there, so that's something that could certainly, we could, we never had the health department, we didn't have the police and fire, we should have had all those people at the table, so we can talk about that.
Thank you, Sheila.
Can I ask her a question?
Go ahead.
Question for you, question before you sit down. With, with that kind of information that you get, you were talking about the next study that's going to be done.
Hi.
It's being done right now.
It's, all right.
We're frank.
And that gets done by the, the, um, by the county. When you, is that the, the type of stuff that when you get that information, it then comes down, like you're saying it's coming from the county, does it come down to the boards of health? I mean, it, it to the different towns, that, that they do get that?
It's avail, I mean, it's available online through the county.
But when it's finished?
They do a big hoo-ha publicizing that it's out, and then people can go online and read the actual assessment, which is quite thick, but it's, you know, it's got a really nice table of contents that can help people cherry pick the issues that they are particularly passionate about, if that makes sense. Okay.
Sit here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, members of the Board of Health, Dave Gilmet, Chief of Police, 100% on board with everything that's been said. Katie and I have talked about this, uh, a little bit, I've talked to my neighboring communities that do have clinicians on board, and it's really been a huge, uh, help to them in, in tackling the issue of substance abuse and mental health. So we're hoping that we could get, um, you know, that that's a great idea, if we could find a clinician that would, um, help us with both those and be able to come out with us, um, and, and do interventions, that'd be fantastic. And I also spoke with Detective Sergeant Brackett, who was, you know, head of our detective unit and kind of like boots on the ground with this issue, and, um, he's 100% behind more preventive, prevention efforts.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thanks.
Mary?
Chief, would that clinician be full-time, or is that like on an all-call, on an all-call basis, when you think you need the person?
Yeah, like I think, uh, so Dennis has like three right now, and, um, I thought, but I thought they were, I thought they were contract clinicians, right, Katie? Yeah, so they're, they, because they got a huge DMH grant, and, um, so they're, they have them scheduled pretty much, I think there's one available every day.
All the time.
And they actually go out and do proactive work, as well as response out with the officers too, depending on the nature of the calls, so, sounds great.
So there's preventative work they could do as well as the calls?
Oh, yeah, 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Just to add on to that, I just read an article from NIH that, that talked about getting physicians more involved with knowing how to deal with this, because it, it sounds like a lot of parents go to their family physician, and they don't, they don't know where to send them, they don't know what to do. So even if they aren't directly involved with treatment or helping in the community, I think having the physicians in the communities be aware of the resources that are out there to them, to say, okay, you know, they get, they get the family member of, you know, one of their patients come in, that they know where to put them, you know, or to send them. So I think to his point, I, I think the more we can get the physicians at least aware of what is available, is also, is going to be a, I think, a big issue.
Thank you. Julie?
So just to follow up on that, that's really where I started, though, I know too many people in this community that have had children, whether they, whether it be substance abuse or, or other issues, and that's the problem, is, in speaking to Kevin's point as well, is that there are places to send, but, but they're not on Cape, and they're often not really geared to the help that the kids need.
And very often they don't know.
And not just kids, obviously, you know, yeah, other adults as well. And I, and I mean, we're all talking about all the amazing ideas, and I understand that it's a, it's a work in progress, but to the chief's point, to the point of what Dennis has, you know, we're talking about, you know, real people and positions, or a real facility that we need. So to me, yes, we need a structure to figure out how this information funnels down, you, you mentioned that- You, you mentioned that the county's working on analyzing some information that they'll help disperse to us so that we'll have a better way to decide how to move forward. All of those things are very important, and we need those pieces together first before we make a plan. But I hope that that plan, because this is money coming to us from an unfortunate series of events that everybody in the country has gone through, you know, that, that we take those monies that we didn't have and create positions and a structure and a facility for something that we didn't have before that we should have moving forward. And those are the monies that the board isn't held responsible for raising anyone's taxes. This is quote-unquote sort of found money is the best way I can put it, you know, for unfortunate events. And I just hope that we see these things come to fruition, that they are real, that people will really work regionally, because it's too big of a task for one community to take on. But collectively, we could build something, and we can figure out a way to fund positions on, you know, that help the police, help fire, help our community and all of those things. But we also need something that helps our people here on the Cape. And I hope we can get there. It's, I hope it's not a pipe train, you know?
Thank you, Julie. Anyone in the public want to comment? Anyone online? County Administrator?
Just to add that, you know, whatever the outcome is, I expect that Cape and Islands town managers and administrators will have this topic come before us. We'll be talking at that level of whatever pooled resources would be. I'm sure Anne Marie's similar group would talk about it from an administrative standpoint. So whatever the end result is, on the back end, I would say that we're not anticipating any issues as to how that would work. It then just comes back to all of you as the policy decision-makers as to how you want to use it. So we're all primed for this, we're all aware of it, and we all have our groups that we can rely upon. So if anyone has concerns about how that would happen, I would say I wouldn't be concerned about the mechanics of it. We'll have great guidance, and it's pretty straightforward anyway.
Thank you, Kevin. So I'd be looking for the Board of Selectmen, I'd be looking for any member that's interested in being a liaison and a starting point to a group to work with Dr. Katie and Sheila and the chief, and then a nomination. So anyone that's interested, and I would only say one member, therefore we're not a subcommittee, but more of a liaison and somebody to start working with the department as these pre-conversations are happening, and then come back to the board with the beginning of a structure. And I'd like to do that tonight so that we're not wasting any more time. The fiscal year end is going to be sooner than we think. So anyone interested in being on that, being in that role?
Sure, I will.
Excellent. Mary's interested. Can I get a nomination in a second?
I move that Mary be our liaison to the opioid committee.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Joe, anything to add?
Just that that was not noticed, it may require an additional act, but that's okay.
What's that?
We'll get there, I get what you're saying.
Yep.
Okay.
Keep doing it, and we'll, we'll certify it later.
Okay. Moved in seconded to have Mary be our representative to whatever working group that gets formed to move this forward. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Five zero. Karen, back to you.
Hi.
Back to you for anything closing, or?
No, I, um.
Yeah, we'll get into that. On this topic, anything else?
I don't think so.
All right, I put on the agenda, just for clarification, state regulation regarding trash and potential bylaw. I know the Board of Health took this up. We had sent it to you, we took it up, and, and you guys discussed it and didn't recommend anything.
Correct.
And this was more for the Board of Selectmen to ask questions if they still wanted to ask questions.
Or you can, if anybody wants, Katie said she's willing to get up and explain why we came to that conclusion.
Perfect. As we all know, we had a resident come before us and asked that we take this up. And I believe you all got the memo from the Board of Health saying that they looked at it and they think we're in a good position. Katie, do you want to expand on that, and then the board can ask questions if?
So the, the board had a discussion at one of their regularly scheduled meetings. And it's already in the state Mass General laws that you can't put trashcans out 24 hours ahead of time. It just seemed redundant. We can already enforce this if need be.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, Julie?
No, I don't have any. I, you know, I think that there's things in place, and I think it just gets more complicated.
Mary?
Yeah, I, I rode around because there was a trashcan problem. Frankly, I expected to see a mess, and I didn't. And then I started looking in my own neighborhood, and there's a few out. And it's kind of a personal property choice, as far as I see it. I don't anticipate there's any real enforcement to this.
It's very tough to enforce for the amount of staff we have. It's, it's two inspections because you have to go out on one day and then confirm it 24 hours later. We often have to prioritize what comes in, and that's typically not high on our list. So it is something that's tough. By the time we get out to check it, they're usually away. We do recommend when residents call, you know, knock on your neighbor's door, see if they're elderly, if they're having a hard time, if they've had surgery, maybe they need help. So we often suggest that they reach out to them first. And it gets ugly when we step in right away, like that too, for, for neighbors. But we do try to enforce it as best we can, but we don't have a, a big enough staff to be following up on that constantly right away.
Agreed, I like your priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Don? All set? Mary?
No, I agree. I, I think my other suggestion, the same way we can do some additional education, that will help with a pamphlet or something, because...
What'd you have in mind? We're always, we're always, you know, willing to do education, but...
Yeah. Well, that's where I leave, whether it's just something, one of the talk things on the Channel 18, Jamie's there to do it, because, you know, I don't see trash around, but I do see people don't cover the trash right away, and raccoons get it and spread around.
That's a winter project we could certainly work on, sure.
Yeah, but you're a, yeah, I can't give you any more guidance than that. We see it because we see an increasing rat population.
And that's Cape-wide, unfortunately.
And Cape-wide, not here, yeah, probably, probably countrywide, but, but...
Mild winters, a lot of bird feeders.
And that's part of the education, it's just not trash, it's bird feeders and everything.
So we do plenty, we do tons of education on, on rats, so we do have that as part of our rat education. We have a great rat brochure outside the Health Department.
So that's just, thank you, Katie, I'll leave it there.
Could nominate Larry to the trashcan police. All right, anything further on that? All right, Sharon, I think we're good with the joint meeting, if you want to adjourn yours?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
I second that motion.
Aye.
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 Let the record show, it was, it was unanimous for them to adjourn their meeting.
Can I have your mic back?
Give them one minute to move around.
We do have a public hearing.
Julie, for the, that's what we should do. Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on, so anyone that wishes to have further conversation on this should go out in the hallway. All right, Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 138 on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 PM in the Don B. Griffin Room located in Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, for the purpose of hearing a progress update from Chase Escape Cape Cod DBA Summer House Cafe, 126 Route 28, Harwich, regarding the non-use of their current seasonal all-alcohol liquor license. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend. Remote participation is also offered. Please see the posted agenda for dial-in information. And it's signed the Harwich Board of Selectmen as the local licensing authority.
Thank you, Don, and this is a continuation also from July 11th.
Yes.
Joe, will you give us an explanation on your phone today?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman, late this afternoon, I received an email from an attorney who has informed both the town through me and, and your counsel, Jeff Blake, that he now represents the establishment under the hearing. Attorney Satterwhite has indicated that he would respectfully request a continuance of this hearing for a date certain, which I can offer in a moment, for the reason that first, he's new counsel to the establishment, and secondly, as the town became aware late last week, the establishment no longer has a manager of record, wherein Mr. Thomas Paulini notified us of his immediate resignation, so they need to handle that. And then last but not least, they're scheduled to go in front of the Board of Health later on this month regarding the ongoing septic issue. I spoke with Attorney Blake, your counsel, and he recommends that the board does vote to continue this. And the recommendation would be that this hearing be continued until Monday, November 21st, 2022, no earlier than 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Joe. Before we get into board discussion on this, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
So rather than close, you would vote to continue for the date certain?
I move to continue the hearing.
The date certain?
Well, you want the whole motion for, and then we'll have a discussion, all right. I move that we continue this hearing to November 21st, no sooner than 6:00 PM. Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Further discussion? Larry?
None.
Don?
Nope.
Mary?
Nothing.
Julie?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, to continue to November 21st, no earlier than 6:00 PM. All set with that, Joe?
Yep, thank you.
All right. Next up is a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, Harwich Affordable Housing Trust, and Harwich Housing Committee. I'm not really sure where we're going to put everyone for this, but come on up. I don't think anyone's going to be left. And then, Joe, we will rely on you to call the Housing Trust to order, and then the Housing Committee, whomever's going to do that second.
Mary?
And we have room at the end of the table here, if you want.
I'll share my mic with you.
Yep.
And, and Mary, there's another floor here at the end.
I don't think we have a quorum.
In a group? Yeah. Joe, Joe, is that a problem? We don't have a quorum in our, we're short of quorum in our little committee, we only have three people.
And what's your makeup?
Five.
So we would welcome the guests from the Housing Committee.
We try.
You don't have to call anything to order, you are, you are guests from the Housing Committee.
Thank you.
You can't vote on anything.
We can pipe in though, right?
You can pipe in.
A lot.
I'm not turning the gavel over to you, Mary.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, if I may, as Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust for the town of Harwich, I would call our meeting to order and ask the members to identify themselves by roll call. Salkman Howell?
Donald Leth Howell, Vice Chair of the Housing Trust.
Brendan Lowny.
Larry Brophy, Clerk, Housing Trust.
And I know Judith sent an email today, is she online? I'm not sure who yes is. Judith is not with us tonight. And we don't have to get you to call your meeting to order. Okay, I, I put this together, I talked to the Chair of the Housing Trust, and really it's to discuss everything related to housing. We have been talking about housing being an emergency in Harwich for the last 15 to 17 years, and that has progressed. We have formed a Housing Trust, and thank you for your service on the Housing Trust. Housing Committee often asks, what can we do? And we don't really have any answers to them. And to date, we have now with the Housing Trust, we have gotten permission from town meeting on several parcels, parcels of land to transfer to the trust, not necessarily to build housing on, potentially to sell and use the money to build some housing. We have acquired a large, an important parcel of land, the Marsline property, but we haven't built anything. And I know for me, I'll speak as one selectman, people call me often and ask me what we're doing, how often we're working on this, and if we're going to talk about it being an emergency, maybe we should prioritize building something instead of acquiring more land. That's one, and I know other selectmen have approached me, and that they've gotten complaints from the public also that we're not doing enough if this is in fact an emergency. We're watching the towns around us build, and we're not building. We're going back and forth to CPC, and we're asking them for money. And I know several members of CPC that have, are now questioning what we're doing, and I'm concerned that we're going to lose the $500,000 or more that they've been gracious enough to give the town. I have read the emails that have come from individual board members, some, trust members, I'm sorry. Joe shares with me on our Tuesday meetings, kind of updates me on what's going on in the trust. I know in one instance, one member of the trust expressed interest in going over the trust documents and, and change, potentially changing the trust, and has mentioned using the council that we voted to support for the trust. For me, I'll speak for myself on that, and we'll get into questions after that. We voted to appoint counsel to the trust for real estate transaction purposes, not for an attorney to second-guess town council, not for an attorney to get, to, to start a back-and-forth with town council. I feel like it's a complete waste of our money. But that question was, had arose last year, and more recently in the last three months, in an email form from one trust member asking that we get, that we move forward with, talking about the trust documents. So tonight really is for the Board of Selectmen to get an update from the trust, for the trust to ask questions of the board, and the board to ask questions of the trust, and maybe we can all get on the same page, certainly with some input from our Housing Committee. As we move forward, Selectman Anderson probably will, will discuss the charge of the Housing Committee and what their role is, because I know that there's been some questions about what their role is. But going forward, if, if we're going to all talk about housing, it's time that we actually build something. Joe, I will turn it over to you on the trust side before we get into any questions from the board.
Thank you. So a week ago this evening, the Affordable Housing Trust hosted its second, to my knowledge, second community engagement forum on the question of affordable housing. This was building off an effort that the trust members, as previously constituted, had conducted back in April of 2019. I'll leave it to others to, to report out as they see fit, but I will tell you that I thought it was a, and a very productive evening of discussion. We had more than 40 people present. We met for nearly two hours, and, and I think we covered a lot of high-level topics, but it was good to resume that process of engaging the community in these conversations, especially when we know that there was a planning board meeting on that same evening. The Montemoy School District was doing a similar community engagement for their efforts, and the local planning committee had met earlier. But I was thrilled to see board members, planning board members after the meeting, after their meeting, and certainly members from the local planning committee, as well as Real Estate and Open Space Housing Committee and, and many others. So I think the conversation last week was a great start, or a great resumption perhaps of where the trust may have been at prior to COVID. So I do think we're moving the needle forward on that conversation. I have some personal thoughts, well, let me strike that. I have my professional personal thoughts on, on trust matters going forward, especially next steps and things like that. I will add that I had an opportunity, and I thank Board Member Anderson for the heads-up on it. I participated in the Lower Cape Housing Institute's Housing 101 Workshop today. So it was somewhat rudimentary, but there was still good information from that. I look forward to getting that slide from them, so the trust members can be aware of it as well. And the trust voted back in August to resume or begin, I think, for the first time, at least twice monthly meetings. And so we're ratcheting up the effort on that. With regard to the CPC application, we did put in a similar application this year for $500,000, for what I noted in the application is considered to be capital seed money for the trust to use, as I understand the trust was originally envisioned to do. And I'll be presenting on behalf of the trust and the town on CPC updates Thursday evening to CPC. to CPC. And really then, just leave it for the rest of the trust members to offer their thoughts and comments.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, do you want to get an overall kind of update to the public and to the board on where the trust, where you are right now, any progress? Last update we had was from Selectman Howell, and at the time Larry was focusing on something, Judith was focusing on something, but it seemed like everybody was focusing on a different topic. Nowhere can I find where any of that has landed. Before you start your update, Trust Member Brophy had his hand.
Maybe, maybe I'll let Joe save his breath for a minute. I could probably give you a relatively quick summary, Mr. Chairman, and you can certainly ask questions from that, and I'll be relatively brief.
Is that okay, Chair of the Trust?
Would that be okay, Joe?
No objection.
Go ahead, Larry.
Okay, gargle. As you know, we purchased 13 and, 13 and a third acres last July we closed, which is about 15 months ago. So the next question is, how come we're not nailing two-by-fours? Well, there's been, you know, a little bit of difficulty with COVID. We've had a lot of difficulty with community engagement meetings, very difficult to have. And the difficulty in finding a housing advocate, housing coordinator, or housing, whatever we want to call that person, has been very difficult, very hard, very hard to find. Having said that, we did have that community engagement meeting, and I'll get to that in a minute, last week. But along the way, we're also in the process of moving forward with the appraiser, the surveyor, civil engineer, the same real estate attorney, and that's for real estate matters, and possibly an architect or town planner, depending on what comes out of it. And we've had discussions with both the Veterans Administration, with Habitat, and lately, thanks to Mary, we're in the process of trying to get a meeting together with the people that developed Yarmouth Commons over on Route 28, and I think there's a goodly number of units there. How many, if you?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine units there, all of which are, I believe, are affordable.
Larry, if I could interrupt for one second. You said moving forward with appraiser, surveyor, and you mentioned some other people.
Civil.
What do you mean by moving forward?
Well, we have to, have to get a competitive bid out. We've used some before, so we have to go through the process again to get, hopefully we'll get the same surveyor. That's good business practice. And finding a civil engineer is not easy, to say the least. I know both Brendan and I have talked to several town engineers, civil engineers, and they're very difficult to get, and they're all busy, and it's a matter of where they are and when they are, and when they can squeeze you in. So that, in itself, has been difficult. I've spoken to some people that are development, housing development people. Nobody is really interested in leaving the job that they've got now, and everybody tells me that, you know, if I wanted to move, there's eight jobs I can take my choice from. As a result, they're probably hard to find them. I haven't been involved in the, in the search for a housing coordinator, but I know it's difficult. That might be, that might be a very difficult chore to complete. And another thing that we're moving forward on, that's very slow to do, is to have discussions with the adjacent property owners, and it would probably be a good idea to engage a real estate agent to do that. It's a little awkward for one person or two people, then certainly not with three people, you can't do it. It's very difficult to get to the people that we should be talking to. We know who they are, and they, in all probability, would like, would like to get on board, which would increase the lands out there. As you know, you probably know the lands better than I do out there.
So Larry, can I just ask you a question, and maybe it's, should be directed to the Chair, but you talk about talking to a real estate agent and talking to the abutters.
Correct.
I guess my question to the trust is, why? Why would we want to buy more property when we haven't developed the 13 acres that we already have, and we haven't done anything with any of the other land that we own? Why would we want to move forward with more purchases without putting a two-by-four or a wall up?
A good question. One, first of all, it takes time to do it. The land that is available now, we can develop in and of its own. We would certainly design it so that Phase 1 would be on one side of the street, and Phase 2 would be whenever. Now, we can do that, so that's an advantage that the town of Harwich would have, but it becomes very difficult for individual property owners to do it. So it's advantageous for the owners to do it. If they don't consider it advantageous, it'll be a lovely park.
I mean, ultimately, that property is ready for an RFP. So that would really be the next step to say, hey, developers, we have 13-plus acres here in Harwich, and just send it out there.
And that was my question.
Right.
Why are we talking? Why is the trust talking? And forward-thinking is always great.
Yeah. I think, I think everything's on the table when it comes to all these properties. It's, each one is going to need an RFP. For example, we just took Oak Street, and we knew it had some issues with wetlands. When we did our site plan, you could see that it really wasn't viable to do anything more than maybe a little tiny one-bedroom house. It's not going to yield a four-bedroom house or do anything else. So that was the first step. That was not an experiment, but like, hey, let's grab all the properties and see what we do with it. So Oak Street was great that we got that. Now we know, let's sell it. Maybe it's a good property to sell, or the credits that Joe mentioned during his last meeting. So that's one property we're going to tackle. I think this property is the same thing, develop an RFP for all the properties we have, and throw it out there and see what we get back. I think that's something we could have done, but we just think there's a lot on the table, and we're going through it the best we can.
Thank you, Brendan.
And another thing, Mr. Chairman, is that as we look at doing this, and we put an RFP out, then it's a question of where do we put the RFP out? I mean, if you want to have a developer from Essex or Winchester or wherever the case might be, it's a little difficult to get one to come down here to do it. Nevertheless, if the, if the project goes on its own, do we want to develop it ourselves, or do we want to do it with an RFP? Is this going to be the Harwich Development Corporation or the Harwich Board of Selectmen? I mean, it's a valid question. I don't think, I don't think you want to put additional people on for long periods of time to do it, so I would, I would suspect an RFP for a developer to develop the property and make it affordable, and then it's over and done with. You can manage it, but outside of that, you don't have to build it. You're buying a problem you don't need to buy.
Thank you, Larry. Don?
Yeah, let me try to pull this all together, because we're, we're actually at the precipice of a next phase for the trust. Joe did a good thing by setting up that housing forum. We needed a basis for discussion. We also need a basis for discussion Marsline, lest anybody forget about it. This is not a former bank facility. It's not a former nursing home. The closest analogous situation to it is in Yarmouth, the project. I encourage Larry to go to Yarmouth to get some basic information about how that came to pass, because that's an excellent-looking project. But in order to be able to get to an RFP, there's like five different things that we're at the beginning of doing. We did get the contractor, and Joe was able to finish that contract off over the last few weeks for the engagement for the public, to do the action plan. They plan on meeting with us shortly, and Joe is going to agenda that, for them to kick off finishing off our plan about what the relative priorities are with spending money. But again, the Marsline one is the most exciting one, but it's also the one that's got nothing on it. It's a really clean sheet of paper. So I mean, to be able to develop that, right, there have been lots of talks about possibly giving some possible land for development, Habitat, some to a veterans organization, and some to just RFP it out to create a kind of village setting that's similar to what Yarmouth has. All that's going to take time in order for it to come to fruition, and the problem is that there's no, there had been no discussion with the public about what they wanted to see there. I can assure you, though, we're not talking hundreds of thousands. We're talking millions to be able to buy down the property for development in order to get what we want out of it. Even if we gave the property to the developer as seed capital, there's probably going to need to be a buy-down in order to achieve what it is that we want to achieve as the end result. None of that's fast, but I thought it was heartening to get the forum together, and I think it's, we're going to wind up with a more fine discussion that's going to be narrower, because that forum was about housing in general and the needs of the town. Now we've got to start talking about the properties, and we had discussed at trust meetings, breaking out some point people to chase down individually, because there's about five projects or five things. There's two properties that might want to get flipped, there's two, there's the Marsline one and the System Road property, but if we do this linearly, we're going to take forever. And the idea of getting one, one of the trust members to pursue information, to bring it back to an agenda for a public discussion, to be able to take a next step, is appealing because we could run parallel to be able to get things done. I share the Chair's frustration here. Mary and I have talked about this before. I'm as frustrated as anybody in this room.
Not that frustrated, just so you know.
I am more frustrated.
I'm really trying to bring this forward because the public is asking.
Well, then I'm more frustrated than anybody in this room, but.
I'm with you, Don.
But I will say, and I know Mary is too, but, you know, I spearheaded the HESH part of the Habitat HESH Project Murray Lane. That took two years. I mean, it shouldn't have taken two years, but it did take two years. Getting through 40B is a process that's daunting, and we're not even at that point yet. We really do need to put an RFP out, but, I mean, I, for one, would like to give Joe a break, because it's like, we're finally, it's not that everybody's running off in a different direction, it's that there are different directions we need to pursue. I mean, Judith wants to pursue certain things, Larry wants to pursue certain things, Brendan does. Everybody's got a different skill set, and if we could utilize that as an advantage rather than a loss of focus, I think we can get a heck of a lot done between the meetings and bring them back to have discussions about, okay, I found out this. Like Larry has the information for the contact for the developer for Yarmouth. Next step is, okay, how do they do it? What, what, what did they expect as the buy-down? And what did the town of Yarmouth get in response to that? Talking to the developer is an excellent way of finding that out, to hack the project to find out, can we equate that to what we need to do? Again, we're not retrofitting anything. It's a vast field. It's an empty field right now. That's a whole lot different than taking a bank ops building and retrofitting it, or taking a nursing home, because there's already a site plan for those things. There's parking approved, there's a whole bunch of hurdles that you've already passed. Now you're just changing the use subtly in order to put housing in, but you've already gotten past the argument about traffic and some other things that we're going to have to go through. I'm pretty heartened that we're at a, we're at a pretty decent place right now, but there's so much to do that I think we could be a better help to Joe.
I guess my only comment on that, Don, as long as it's happening in an open meeting and that you guys are deciding who's doing what with some general focus, coming back to the public.
It has to be that way, yeah.
And coming back to the trust or voted by the trust, it makes perfect sense to me. If it's just board members with their own vision, or trust members with their own vision, it makes no sense to me.
That's what's happening, and no one is making a commitment.
So at our meeting, we're hoping that moving forward, we're going to have more agenda items and start taking votes and moving forward, so.
Thank you, Brendan. Joe?
I just wanted to pick up, Mr. Chairman, on that last comment, and hopefully expand on it, but for me, this is going to sound crazy, but I am the newest member of the trust, and I did not have a chance, I was not here to participate in the community engagement event back in 2019. So last Tuesday was a seminal event for me, that I finally had a chance to be part of the trust. The trust members allowed me to be the opening speaker, if you will. And so to finally have that opportunity to truly engage with the community and ask questions, but also offer some information, as, as brief as it was in the grand scheme of what we do, you know, two hours in a weeknight over months and weeks and years that we've been working on this, I still found value in it. And to segue back to this meeting and to hopefully leverage what we have here tonight, meaning a majority of the trust, very interested parties for the Housing Committee, and once they have more members, but we know they're keenly interested, and of course, all of you on the board. When I developed the presentation on behalf of the trust last week, there were some points that I was reminded of, and that exercise was helpful for me. So I'd like to put some things out on the record tonight, if I could, sort of as a reminder, because again, coming into the trust where four fifths were well-established and have, you know, significant history, I'm trying to catch up, to the point where Brendan was kind enough to share with me the slide deck that was used back in 2019, which I was generally unaware of. So it was nice to have that, and to sort of connect the dots between the two. But as we're here tonight, and as your agenda item says, to discuss all matters related to housing, I think it might be useful for everybody to hear the actual purpose of the trust as outlined in the Declaration of Trust, which creates the fund and the Board of Trustees that are before you this evening. And the purpose of the trust, according to that, is to provide for the preservation and creation of affordable housing in the Town of Harwich for the benefit of low and moderate-income households, as defined by Mass Department of Housing and Community Development. So it's preservation, creation, affordable housing, but specifically two quantifiable metrics, low and moderate income, and not a nebulous concept, but one that's defined by not only the state through DHCD, Housing and Community Development, but also as an adjunct by them to Housing and Urban Development, or the federal agency that started all of this and really oversees anything to do with affordable housing. And so one of the things we talked about last week was, let's get common definitions out there. And so when we hear those phrases, low and moderate income, they're specifically defined, low income is a household earning up to 50% of the area median income, and so AMI, as we call it, and the AMI is for Barnstable County. So it's, it's not, you know, someplace out in the state, it's based on our census district area. So 50% of area median income, and I'll get to that number in a moment. Moderate is a household earning greater than 50% and up to 80% of the area median income in Barnstable County. Now, area meaning, median income is a number that's derived every spring through Housing and Urban Development, the federal agency that starts all of this. So for the present cycle that we're in, and if we looked at an individual looking to, you know, to be a household of one, if we're talking low income, we're talking a salary or a median income, excuse me, is a better way to say it, of somebody that makes under $40,000, specifically $38,050. The moderate income, and again, we're going to use the example of a one-person household, is making up to $60,900. Now, the other thing that HUD does, and again, the area median income always comes out in April, and that's, I think, because it's six months after or before the federal fiscal year ends. The fiscal year that just began, they now introduce the fair market rents. And so just to put a context to all of that, a one-bedroom that is going to be available for a low-to-moderate-income person, and again, we have the specific numbers for us, the rent numbers are also for Barnstable County, and that's 1,428. So $1,428 a month is a fair market rent. And so when you put all that together, I was struck by that, because part of the presentation that we talked about last week touched on, as you all may recall, subsidized housing inventory, SHI, which again is managed by Housing and Community Development. And we know that our level is 5.4%, and we know that if we exceed 10%, that means that the town has greater, for lack of a better phrase, control over the 40B process. But to get to that control, you have to give something up, so to speak. You have to engage in this active affordable housing process. And then separately, we talked about another nebulous concept called workforce housing. And I say nebulous because there is no Housing and Urban Development definition of that. The definition that I found that we may want to rely upon comes from the Mass Housing Partnership, which is a quasi-private public agency that does great work in that space, but the point is, that's not an official government distinction. Therefore, if we work on, work. Therefore, if we work on workforce housing, which is something that the trust has generally talked about, that doesn't qualify as capital A affordable, capital H housing, as I've just talked about those definitions, and the, and the state and federal definitions, or to the subsidized housing institute. So, for me, I think it, it bears repeating that the purpose of the trust is to preserve and create affordable housing for low and moderate income. And we have targets on that. And I think as the trust meets again in our next meeting, and as Brendan was saying, we're gonna agenda that item and talk more about that. Because to some of the board members' comments of, when do we get to the building part of it? You know, that data is crucial. The other thing we started to talk about with the community last week was, what do you want us to build? And by that, you know, what was the style, the outlook? Now, I mentioned that I participated today in the Lower Cape Housing Institute, and they had a slide from another group called Missing Middle Housing. And what was impactful about that is they demonstrated the range of types of buildings that could be built, that are considered affordable, and that might fit into the character of a community. So, for me, this all leads to, I think the trust can now progress towards a discussion about developing a request for proposal. And a request for proposals for the development of the property off of Pleasant Lake Avenue, that we refer to as the Marseline property. But as we do that, and as this group is assembled for housing, we, the trust, need to be mindful that we're about to embark, if we go that way, on an RFP process that's gonna have a significant impact on our community because it will be to develop low and moderate income that meets all the requirements, and is something we haven't done before en masse, is my understanding. And so, to your original opening, Mr. Chairman, I would say that the trust continues to do its work. We had some side projects, so to speak, on some of the other properties. We still have a fiduciary responsibility to find out what is the value of all those other properties. And for me, value, it means what can we do with it for the benefit of the town? Or what can we get for it to then supplement our seed capital money? But I do think, because we've invigorated the community engagement, and because we do know the specifics of what we, what our charge is as fiduciaries, I do think we can take that next big step over the coming months.
Thank you, Joe. Go ahead, Don.
And Joe's absolutely right. The only reason I didn't go to that meeting last week is I didn't wanna start it off being a super-spreader. But having said that, we're at a point, and I think you need to be able to even drill down a little bit further. The majority of the money that we have expended so far came from the CPC. That comes with a higher level of scrutiny and responsibility by the state. You cannot spend that on anything but 60 or 80% housing. It's, that's, it's fixed. The flagpole money was slightly less encumbered. If we were to take some of the properties that Joe was talking about and flip them, they'd have slightly less restrictions. But we have, we've got some inner requirements that have to be met, too. And we also have to recognize that in order to get what we want as an end result from a developer, especially in this environment, we're gonna have to spend out not tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands, probably several million dollars to be able to get to the point that that property is developed in a way that we want it developed. So, I get that we're aggregating money, but we spent damn near a million dollars on buying the properties, like in the high eights, in the first place. We were super lucky because after that point, real estate just exploded. We never would've gotten it at the price that we got it at if we had waited much longer. And that was because, basically, they approached us, recognizing Jimmy's heritage and that he would wanna see that happen. Having said that, we're still at a point where the cost per square foot to build things is astronomical. And we're gonna have to buy down stuff in order to get the end result, or else we're gonna wind up being captive to what it is the developer tells us that he'll do on the property. And I'm pretty sure, knowing the chair through the years, that's not the direction you wanted to go. We wanted to be able to control more of our destiny in the end result.
Thank you, Don. Before I get into board members, is there anyone else that wants to add anything outside of what has already been said?
I, I think, not to belabor, belabor the point, Mr. Chairman, but, but having, having listened to both, two previous chairmen, we're still looking at a project that, in all probability, is going to exceed 20-plus million dollars to build out. And it's probably gonna take, we won't be sitting at the table by the time it's done. Some of us won't be. But it's, it's an expensive proposition, it's time-consuming, and it's effectively the Harwich Development Corporation.
Thank you, Larry. Not yet.
Go ahead, Mary.
Save the best for last.
No, I'm not recognized by the chairman yet.
Trust, or, trust members are all set. It's time being Mary, I'll think, go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah, then I'm gonna get back to the board. Go ahead. I don't want you to lose your thought.
So, just, just two minor points, right? Obviously, all development comes down to numbers. Whether it's a buy down, or whether it's determining how many units you're willing to have on a space, it's all gonna come down to numbers and what the town is ultimately comfortable with, and what a developer can still make affordable with the numbers that, that have to happen. Going back to the 2016 housing production plan, we were at a number that was 21 units annually in order to get us to the 10%. Certainly, we were nowhere, have done nowhere near that since 2016. One of the other items that I just wanna point out with Yarmouth, there are two, there are two in Yarmouth. It's Yarmouth Commons and Yarmouth Gardens, and they look very similar. They were also both rundown hotels, and they were, while they weren't a hotel-motel conversion to housing, the space was used to be redeveloped into housing. So, one was the old Cavalier Motel, one was, I, I think it was Yarmouth Gardens was actually, could've been the name of the hotel, that they demolished and rebuilt and, and developed. So, obviously, they both have a very similar look on Route 28, and is a location that is conducive to larger-scale apartments. But nonetheless, you know, hotel-motel conversions was another item that was in the 2016 production plan. So, I just point that out as a, for those that don't know the development that Larry and Don were referring to, that's where they are at 28. They're those multi-colored, three-story apartment buildings. One in, one near Skull Island, one further down towards, in the West Yarmouth section, as you're approaching Bury Ave and the, and the lights at Higgins Pole. So, it's a different, different kind of, different kind of situation that you're starting with. You know, there, they had other development costs, they had demolition costs that, you know, you're not gonna have on an open, on an open parcel of land. Obviously, numbers are gonna drive everything.
And as mentioned, those fit in on Route 28 in Yarmouth.
Right.
Back to the board. Julie, comments, questions?
So, I attended the forum, which, to Joe's point, to everybody's point. It was, I thought it was very well-attended, and there was a lot of good discussion. And we did talk about workforce as well as, you know, the affordable and moderate. But the other part of that discussion also talked about the need, to the point that Larry made earlier, do, do we wanna be responsible for this? Do we wanna bring in a developer? And I think we, we kinda know that answer, is that we don't want to be the landlords, right? So, we, we just wanna build this, and we want to create housing. And to the chair's point, you know, we are, we're getting a lot of questions, you know, watching other communities build things, to the point that Mary just made, this is not a former, you know, motel, hotel, you know? It's, it's a open parcel. And the discussion about what, what fits in the community or, or different types of neighborhoods. But that goes to me, anyway, back to another massive discussion that needs to happen, and needs to happen quickly, is zoning and density and addressing bylaw changes. And that is, as we all know, is super-important because we're gonna get on that now. It takes us a long time to get there, to make these changes, to bring them to town meeting. And, and, you know, we've got that issue that has to be addressed. We have to look at the zoning, we have to look at the density, we have to think about what we want on those parcels. And, you know, we, we should be able to, with that acreage, have decent types of, different types of neighborhoods.
Variety.
Variety, right. So, I'm hoping that we can start to move that discussion quickly because it also ties in to our ADU bylaw that is currently not working the way we would like it to work collectively. So, we need to figure out what we can do legally to change that, to fit in, because we, we've got issues in town where people are looking to create this type of housing.
And can't.
And can't do it, right? And that was not the initiative behind the ADU, it was to make it easier. But we're, we're really not because we've got different issues. So, I think those two things, to me, are a priority because that will dictate how we get there and how, what we can put on those lots. So, I just think, to me, that is the most important thing that needs to happen. It need, it's October. We need to have those discussions, we need to have drafts, we need to move it forward, and we need to figure out what everybody's okay with and what could be successful at town meeting. But I would say that's, to me, the first and foremost.
And that's on the, that's on the board of selectmen.
If I might, though.
I would just say, Julie, if you're gonna, just send me an email, obviously, with what you wanna accomplish.
Yep, well, you and I have discussed it, but. Yeah, I will.
Looking at an email makes the agenda a lot easier.
If I might, this is not, we're not waiting for that. We'd be 40 being this. This is not gonna be done under zoning, either existing or changed, so.
But that's a collective discussion.
It may be, but that's, that's not, as Joe pointed out, that's not the charge of the trust. The charge of the trust is to build the certain type of housing within a fiduciary responsibility. And just so everybody knows, we're not waiting for the zoning to change. We could put out an RFP that is contingent on a 40B approval, which would probably be a lip because we'd want it to be a local initiative. And hopefully, that would jumpstart, start the ZBA and get that process moving a little faster. We're not sitting waiting to the zone to change.
Hopefully, we'll use a friendly 40B.
Yeah.
Right, right. So, that's fine, Don, and I understand all of those pieces, but, but that's not the only possible gun to develop. So, obviously, if we can go through, you know, 40B-friendly, whatever way we gotta go about it, I get that. But it is a discussion that needs to start happening now in terms of collectively the zoning and where we can do different densities that we haven't addressed in quite some time.
That would be where these folks would get in.
Right, I, I understand that. But we, as a board, need to drive the changes that we need to bring to town meeting. But there's also the question of the partnership. And, you know, maybe it's not at that parcel because maybe it needs to be a larger. But we should also be looking at partnerships we can develop locally. You know, we're surrounded by builders and, and other tradespeople. And I think that all of them are suffering, too, from the lack of housing for their, for their workers. They're losing out on hiring people. So, I think that you've got some, you know, yeah, I work at a builder, you know, a fairly large builder, but that's luxury homes, you know? So, overall, though, there's a lot of these people who are invested already in our community. And even if it's a collective discussion that they come to a, a trust meeting, I, I think we should start having those conversations.
Even at that, Henry Ford made a lot of money selling economical cars.
Yeah, yeah, right? So, I just think that ultimately, that we have a lot of people with expertise in the community that have a vested interest also in creating housing. So, we should start having those discussions as well.
Thank you. Mary?
I'm with Don. I'm, I'm very frustrated about housing. It was one of the reasons I wanted to join the Board of Selectmen because it, it felt to me like we were going nowhere. Now, I know about zip, about building houses. But I do know there are two big organizations, the CDP and HAC, that have all kinds of people that will help us do this stuff. I don't know why we wouldn't go to them and get them help us do an RFP and send it out next Tuesday. I'm, this, I, I'm just tired of talking. I wanna see some hammers. I, I don't know what more to say.
Thank you, Mary. Larry?
Well, I'm not individually frustrated, I guess, but we have to, we need to move ahead. I like the comments, Julie, because I do think that, you know, I think what Don says, we need to start now. We need to do some things, and we don't wanna become Larry landlords. We need to go to a private developer. That's, that's, I think, clear to all of us. But in saying that, my frustration has been, until we have a good discussion and start with a comprehensive plan on, on zoning in town, we're, we're at the back end of the problem rather than the front end of the problem. We're hiring a housing person to try to work within the scope because we don't have the zoning to have more density where it works, or to protect open space where it works. And so, I, I think we have to move where we are now, but we have to look at the overall town structure, where we can, and zoning is a big part of that. You know, so-called smart growth is from the state perspective, where we have open space and more density.
But the smart growth is close to, close to mass transportation, remember?
You're right. But I am, I'm also comforted, though, by the way, that you guys are working together now. You know, it's only been a year or two ago where there was a lot of disagreements between the Housing Trust and the Housing Committee. And it took a while, Don, you and I talked about this continually, I think. It seemed to bog things down as well. So, at least we're on the same page and having discussions moving forward. For me personally, I would still like to see you guys come back with action points, like monthly. So, it just doesn't sit there. And just if it's a five-minute discussion, we did this, so people know that we're moving forward. And I actually know a reason why we can't go to an RFP right away, by the way. Because, because you can get good ideas on how building looks and stuff from, from private developers. We don't have to do, do all that ourselves.
I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and we could probably do an RFP within the next two weeks. But any road will get you there if you don't know where you're going. We don't know what to put in the RFP. I mean, we, we all probably have a different idea on, on the type of housing we'd want, and we're looking to hear what we'd like to hear, that we, what we hear from the townspeople that they think will be best, the best housing for Harwich. And that's what we'd like to answer it with.
Hang on.
So, that's how we'd write the RFP.
So, we have another community engagement coming up, first week in November. And I think that's gonna shed a little, a little more light, exactly what Larry said. I think that's what we need to do. We need to hear from the public, the abutters, all the stakeholders, before we send an RFP out. The, give me the middle housing.
Missing middle housing.
Missing middle housing. If you look at that diagram, it shows exactly, in that little space, you'll have maybe Yarmouth Commons on the right, and you have a single family. But in that middle, you'll see these nice little communities, mixed use of condos to all different sizing. And maybe that's something we're looking for. But we wanna get that feedback from, maybe, maybe Yarmouth Commons is something that, that people want in Harwich. Maybe not. I think we have to really vet that out and then really come up with a solid RFP. And that's, and that's our goal for the next two meetings.
And quick, as opposed to slower.
Yeah, absolutely.
Larry Valentine first, Joe Powers second, Mary third.
Well, briefly, not to be argumentative, but the reason I'm pushing for an RFP is, is that we all need public discussion. That's our mission in life, is to be sure we're transparent. On the other hand, it's hard to get public discussion at a blank wall unless you can show people something to react to. And a place to start that may be with an RFP or a request for some information to start that, to start that public discussion rather than have just an open forum.
Joe Powers?
So, I just wanted to follow up on something that I should've stated at the beginning that Brendan prompted me on. We had, the trust had scheduled our meeting schedule for October, November. We built it around the community engagement form that we had last week and the one that we have contemplated for November. I heard from the vendor over the weekend, and they're no, no longer able to meet the date that we had set. So, I, I emphasized that greatly last week, so I need to do an emphasis greatly here that the November 1st community engagement form will not be going forward on that date. And we'll be working with the trust and then find out from the vendor what day will work for them. So, little hiccup on that one.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Joe?
Yes.
Hey, what about me?
Oh, sorry.
I will. I'll try to be polite.
Go ahead, Mary.
I just wonder why you think you will get more input at a second, you only got 40, no? Yes, it was a good meeting, it wasn't bad.
That was a great turnout. It really was.
There were over 60 people at one point.
It was, it was really a great, I was pleasantly surprised with that.
What makes you think you'll get more input from another meeting?
Because it would be focused on a property and not universally Harwich.
What do people want at Marseline? That's the goal of the second round.
Yep.
Okay. I'm, I'm one of the few in the room. Okay. I'm, I'm one of the few in the room, maybe the only in the room, that doesn't think density is a four-letter word. So my vote is, and I, I like, Don has talked to me about trying to do like little villages so it's not just one big stark building. But I don't see why we wouldn't just plan to put a bunch of different things in there and.
That's what we do, that's what we're hoping to do.
For, for the record, Mary.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, we're losing control of the gavel. Who's talking, Mary?
I don't know why we need another meeting to do that.
Just point to me, I'll get to you.
I'm done.
Well, that's.
Brendan? I gotta get to Joe.
First one we did without our consultant and I think they're gonna bring a little bit more to the table, a little more structure. And I think if we focus on one property, get the stakeholders to the table, abutters, they're more than welcome to come, everybody. I think it's gonna be what we need.
Thank you.
After doing this for three years, I think we need it.
All right.
And we, one last, one last comment?
Go ahead.
We had a year and a half of like, we couldn't do community engagement, so we have to get back on track. Started this, we were all about that. And we were doing forums and it was really, I was going to all of these meetings outside the trust. It's important to get back to that.
Thank you. Joe? If anyone else talks, I'm smashing the table.
Well, speaking for the Housing Committee, cause we are.
No, speaking for yourself.
Oh, oh, speaking for myself.
This is your personal opinion. I speak for myself.
You're not your father.
Speaking for myself, um, the, cause I've never missed one of those lower, um, Lower Cape Housing symposiums that so educationally, you should just get onto one of them and you will see and be a little bit depressed at all that is happening around us. However, to give the trust their due in this town, all those towns are several years ahead of us in terms of being formulated in the trust. As it relates to, to me, and, and, um, can I talk about the Housing Committee at all?
You can talk about the Housing Committee.
I can, okay, just in general, uh, I feel like we are an adopted child with not being adopted. From, from the day that we started. We've, I've been with Mary for three years now. I don't know if the trust really wants us to do anything, to be quite candid with the people in the room. I think it, it's not hard to just go to all the towns around us to see what housing committees do and how much they very much support the Housing Trust. To my mind, the Housing Trust job is exactly what they're doing. Finding land, buying the land, getting an RFP going. And my, and, and in our job, I feel as, um, the four towns around us have, um, very strong housing committees and their job is communication, period. And, and what Joe did a week ago, which was very informative, I, I say, just give me those slides, we'll do them next week. Don't, don't try and take everything on, don't try and do everything. And, and the last thing I would say is, um, to, I think it was Mary's point, or I'm not sure. My God, the knowledge that CDP has and HAC is, is unbelievable. This, this whole process will move faster if you just engage with them in, in very strategic, important areas of their entities. Cause they're, they, they have people that just do this. And, um, I was looking at, uh, the, the, uh, one of the largest projects in New Orleans was shown on that symposium this morning, Joe. It started in two thousand sixteen. It ended, it first, the first unit opened in two thousand and twenty, in terms of timing. Twenty million dollar project, four hundred thousand apiece, sixty something units. So there is, there is space and time here, takes a long time to get to the, to the, to the fish line, but you, you gotta get started somewhere. I, I, yeah, the RFP thing is, it's, it's not my lane, but it's definitely tough to put something out there in a blank slot and not slate and not have something. I, the only thing I would add to Joe's slides of, if he does the next one is to show, cause the people in the community don't really know what they want. So if you leave them to the water and you show them just some examples, Joe, of what CDP has done. Some unbelievable mixed stuff that's happened down there is amazing. They have people that paid full value, they have people that are affordable, people that are not. It's just, and, and the proj, the projects and the, the outcome is absolutely gorgeous. You'd never know where you were. You were just in the community, just beautiful, so.
Thank you, Joe. Mary?
Couple of my points. Everybody keeps talking about engaging CDP and, and, um, HAC. Remember, that's all procurement for, we're a, we're a town that's town money that's, that's still paying somebody as a consultant to do your work for you and it's still a procurement process. So it's not a two-week process to, to make it all happen. Two, from my perspective, speaking individually, if you, if you know you want a village environment, then you, then I, I would think your chief procurement officer would put an RFP out in a village environment, speaking to what you're looking for to come back. If you don't know what you want, then you're gonna put it out there and you're gonna get a developer that's gonna say, let's put a thousand rental units out there. And that may not be a bad thing either, I mean, I'm not opposed to density myself. But if you're trying to write a narrative for your property, then you have to kind of figure that out ahead of time. Or else if you just throw a blank slate up at the wall, you're gonna get a blank slate. You could get one developer suggesting a village and one suggesting a thousand units and maybe that's fine too. But just throwing that out there for food for thought as you're going through and thinking.
Thank you.
And having been on, and I just wanted to follow up with one thing, having been on planning board, when people came to talk about redeveloping the Royal into rental units, I have never seen such animosity towards that building getting turned into rental units as if it was, was the worst thing in the world. Some people just don't wanna own and just wanna, just want apartments. That was a very eye-opening public hearing and speaks a lot to NIMBY as well. That you're gonna deal with wherever, wherever anything goes, right? So just pointing those.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two points. One is that MHP also offers, uh, help putting together RFPs. And they did start doing that with Sisson Road. They were like quad, uh, housing, uh, that they had put together. It, so that we weren't throwing something against the wall with the public, they were actually trying to address the trust and what we were looking to try to do. The second one is, I hate to be the wet blanket here, we're using CPC money that bought, that bought land. It is unclear to me legally that we can do this seventy-five, twenty-five, uh, mix because it's unclear to me that we can use any portion of the land for anything up, up to or beyond eighty percent.
Eighty percent.
It's not legally possible as far as I can, uh, as I understand it.
I'll sit down?
Yeah.
Thank you. Joe?
Just to go back to Joe McFarlane's comments. They can't even speak tonight cause they don't have a quorum, so I know they have another member, but they're missing two more members. Cause I couldn't have said it any better, I think, you know, you folks are, have always, always known your charge. You just need the people to help you do it. So that needs to become, um, a critical point where all of us say, we need two more Harwich residents to join that committee. The trust is fully constituted, has been, continues to operate. But to have our partners in housing, because Joe, no one said it, so I will say it. Yes, we do want to work with the Housing Committee and continue doing that. And you need to be fully constituted so you folks can be active.
Yep.
Mary?
Thank you.
Last I knew, you had four and Ellen's list as of October sixth shows there's just one opening.
Joe?
No, we, we have three people. There was a fourth person that, she's just not getting.
Who's your third?
Who were your three?
So Claudia, Ross, myself and Mary Mez.
Fifth is always good, Joe.
Fifth, what?
A fifth is always good.
Fifth would be great.
All right. Mary's gonna check with Ellen and find out. And then we'll, and we'll continue to press.
I, I hear what he said. That's, that's trophy.
Do you have anything you wanna add?
I just wanna get the, hi, sorry, Elizabeth Harder, Chair, Housing Authority. One, I'd love to be on the Housing Committee and my, and my application is being filled out. Because I am the Housing Authority and even though that is a state entity, I think it can be very helpful in giving advice, showing how things are done. And we can also do things for Harwich. We give out rental vouchers, we can do things like that. That's number one, but that's personal, sorry. What I would like to get out to the public is an idea that we have to think outside the box. And I've said this at meetings, but I've never said it before, people, we need housing now. We don't need housing in five years because if we don't have housing now, nobody's gonna live here and they won't need housing. We need housing now, or restaurants are gonna close, companies are gonna close and we're gonna be in deep trouble. We need housing now. The trust has money, it has land, sell the land now. You could get money for that land next week. Use the money to buy houses, renovate them into apartments. That would not take five years. You could do it by the spring. Julie said, we've got builders and contractors here in Harwich that would love to help even though they're backed up because they need the workers and they know they need the workers. You would find so much community engagement if you did something like that. That would be now, instead of talking great ideas about Marceline property, which as Don said, it's illegal. You can't build a village in the Marceline property.
Yeah, we can.
Unless you sell half of it. The trust, the trust and CPC money, as you said, cannot go over eighty percent AMI. You're not gonna be able to get a developer who's gonna wanna build a nice-looking village. It's not gonna happen. Be realistic. Look at what other towns are, are finding out when they're trying to do things. And look at how easy it is, not easy, everything's impossible. But look at the, how much easier it is to renovate than it is to build. So while you're planning this great Marceline property, let's renov, let's buy things, renovate them and have units now. Thank you.
Back to you. Anything to add, Joe? Anything new, anything?
Well, if I could, I, I would love to hear some reactions to that statement.
I think we can get into reactions, what Don said was that we need a legal opinion. He doesn't know if it's legal, so tomorrow when we meet, we're gonna talk about getting.
To have market rate.
Right, so we're gonna talk about getting a legal opinion right now, speculation, I don't think we should speculate. And that's a resident's opinion, so I don't wanna debate a resident's opinion.
Tell you no.
That wasn't the, that wasn't the intention tonight. And this is one of what I hope that we continue to do and through the Selectmen that's in the trust, have the board be updated more often. Julie brought up a very important point about zoning, which I think that that's gonna be back on the board's, um, agenda within the next thirty days to discuss. Anything new to add without getting into debates about what could be legal and what's not legal and somebody's opinion? Joe?
Under those conditions, no.
Mary?
I just wanna point out that just because something is developed as a village doesn't mean it had to be seventy-five, twenty-five. Village could just mean different styles of housing on the same land. So I, I don't, I think there's, there's a wide difference of what some of us in the room think of as a village and others think as a village. So to that point, it could just be different styles, not necessarily not meeting the limits.
Brendan's up.
Yeah, with what I just heard from Elizabeth and Mary, thank you very much. That's why I think the forum and the community engagement is so important. Since we bought this property, last week was the first time we had the community get together and talk about it, or just talk about housing. So I think it's important to have one more meeting, get people together. And everything we're talking about here, we can get fifty, sixty opinions. And then the trust can take it back and really decide how to craft that RFP. So I think it's a pretty, I think it's important to do.
I hope it's been a helpful conversation.
Absolutely, even this, even this is, yeah.
Is there anyone online?
Do you wanna call Elaine out by name?
Elaine, is there anything you'd like to talk about?
Is she the only one?
Apparently not.
Board members?
No, I've had no, thank you very much.
I'll sit, thank you.
She is on there, but maybe she doesn't have anything to say.
I'm sending her a little request to.
Okay. While, while we wait for that, is there any other open business between the trust and the Board of Selectmen? Or any questions from the trust that they need the board to answer? Larry?
One question, Mr. Chairman, probably the wrong time to bring it up, but those of us that head to Florida. Should I send a note, I sent a note to, uh, one of the, um, secretaries asking if I should send an official letter and she said, no, ask the Board of Selectmen.
So I wouldn't ask the Board of Selectmen, I would send a note to your chair. And your chair should make a request as the planning board does and others do to allow them to remote participate.
All right, so the chair would send it to this body?
But it would start with the chair of the committee.
It did.
You know, I thought the resident had, had, my, my opinion, we, we could, and Larry, you said it was a twenty million dollar build out. And I do agree that we need to build some housing now. And I do agree that we don't need to wait for the grand plan to do something.
We can do.
Brendan and I had a nice conversation last week. He told me about the work that's been done on Oak Street. And I think the trust just voting to put a piece of land on the, on the market to sell for more seed money makes sense. To the resident's comment about, um, rehabs. A lot of the towns that are ahead of us are ahead of us because they've been able to rehab and they have been able to public-private partnership and because certain things that fit on Route twenty-eight in Harwich, which I hope never fit in Harwich, um, do fit on Route twenty-eight in Harwich. But we do have things, um, and I know it's not to the trust yet, but there's a couple more buildings that the town owns. We've been able to sell two that have been talked about for as long as I can remember. But there's some other buildings that the town owns that the board will take up within the next thirty days on whether or not it makes more sense to create some housing in them rather than what's in them now. So that will be on our agenda soon. And then two housing units are better than zero housing units. And showing the taxpayers that their money is going to something rather than just plans makes sense to this board member. Approaching people like the owner of the Royal who hasn't done anything with that property yet except for put a fence around it and get some estimates on work, but approaching people like that, that was I believe twenty-four units that was approved.
There was some affordable too.
And there was some affordable, but maybe there's some seed money that can go towards that public-private partnership, which would make it so that he could turn half or more than half into rental units at the appropriate AMI. There was the motel that Whichmere bought and made workforce housing out of it. And that was a fairly cheap conversion for them, for now anyway. But we're, we're missing those opportunities and that doesn't fall on the trust. It falls on probably the Board of Selectmen. But collectively, I think these are the things that we need to look at and build something. And to the resident's, uh, point and to Joe's point on workforce housing, it may not get us to our ten percent, which was a made-up number by the state in, in nineteen sixty-nine. It, it, it will get us employees. It will make it so we can have schoolteachers and firefighters. It will make it so that we can say that we are doing something for housing. Joe, to your point, I know that's not the trust, but that is the Board of Selectmen. So further conversations coming. But I do think that we need to start looking and thinking outside the box as mentioned. Because there is an opportunity right across from Town Hall in a building that is sitting with a fence around it right now and I'm sure somebody would love to have the conversation with us.
For example, Mr. Chairman, the Veterans Administration, it calls me with great regularity, looking for almost anything.
So the opportunities in expanding our horizons, I think, are very important for both the trust and the Board of Selectmen. But it's time to build something, one unit, two units, five units, something. Don and Brendan? One unit, two units, five units, something. Don and Brendan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think you know who it was who was the developer of the Royal. Love to be put back in contact with him. I've made several attempts to try to get to them, be in front of the trust. And we're ready, willing, and able to have that discussion, because that would be low-hanging fruit. It's right in the middle of town. There should be people within walking distance, and I think we can help.
When's the next trust meeting?
Next Monday.
Next Monday. Okay. Brendan, did you have a follow?
Yeah, I was just going to talk about dollars. I mean, we talk about building something, renovation, new construction. You know, I'm a builder. I do it every day, I estimate. And the price is getting really close. It's getting very expensive to build something. So I think about the Yarmouth Commons. We did that walk-through about, I think it was three years ago now. Sixty-nine units. I'm not too sure if the town sold it for a dollar or leased it for ninety-nine years. But they gave thirty thousand per unit. And maybe that's what stuck in my head. That's maybe why I would push back on spending three hundred thousand dollars to renovate a property. They spent thirty thousand dollars, sixty-nine, two-point-one million dollars to get sixty-nine units, thirty thousand dollars a unit. That is a good use of money. So that's always in my, back of my head, how we spend it. Yeah, I think we could build something tomorrow. Sure, absolutely. But I don't know if that's what we want to do with the money.
You have to get the right place.
I think if we're rolling along, but, you know, I think if we're twenty years behind, I think in five years, we're not going to be saying we're twenty years behind. I think there's a lot going on with the trust, the EDU. I know it's not working out, but it's going to hit here and there. And there's things that the town has done in the last couple of years that I've seen. And I'm relatively a new resident here. I've only been here for seven years. But this is all new. And I think we're going to, five years from now, we're not going to be saying we're twenty years behind.
Thank you, Brendan. Larry?
I'm done for me.
Julie?
I'm all set.
Mary?
All set.
Don?
All set.
Larry?
Done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Give it your time.
Good. You're all set. Anyone else? Chairman, you're good. Joe?
Is there a motion to adjourn the Affordable Housing Trust meeting?
I would so move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, that's unanimous, four-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary?
Mary?
Where are we at, Joe?
On a master transfer report?
Yes, and unlike last time, we got some...
Better be good.
I think it's great news, actually. Get it all queued up so I can do a great effect. First, I'm going to steal my colleague's thunder. And I appreciate the nod on that. So now I get to say great things about our colleague. And then, of course, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, is a reference to our town clerk, Emily Mitchell, who has informed me that, as his or her statutory right and responsibility, has pointed alone Jen Clark from the Health Department to be our next assistant town clerk. And again, this wasn't mine, but I think it's a great pick. And I just wanted to put it out there. And of course, the board now knows that we advertised today for an executive assistant in the Health Department. Because as great as Jen is and going to be for Emily, she creates a big, you know, shoes to fill, so to speak, where she has in health. But we are not wasting any time. But wanted to put that out there and congratulate Ms. Mitchell on, I think, a fantastic hire. Along the lines of that, I'd like to take a bow for a fantastic appointment that I made. Not to the same level, but still great to have somebody of a familiar background. Madison LeBlanc. You may know her dad. He's a fire chief. Madison joins us filling the administrative assistant role in the assessing office. I can now tell you that our colleague Sarah Cole was very sad to leave, but her husband was made an offer that he couldn't refuse, and that was to work at a five-star resort in Florida. He is an executive chef, so she left for all the great reasons. Told it to not be a stranger, but we are thrilled to have Madison joining us to fill Sarah's shoes. More on these, more announcements as they come in. But we are making great progress on many of the vacancies. We are still working very hard to fill Director of Planning and Community Development and Housing Advocate. And remind anybody and everybody, if they know somebody, please let us know. That concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Mary, go ahead.
Joe, could you send the Housing Advocate write-up or whatever out to each of us? I was thinking I could forward it to some of my nonprofit friends who, you know, just gets it to different circles.
Absolutely. And I would also just put out there right now that if anyone listening, you can also go straight to our website. On the main page, there is a link that says work opportunities. And those positions are so advertised and available, so I can send both the documents and the link. But if anyone says it, just tell them, go straight to the town's website. Under work opportunities, we keep those posted until filled.
Great, thank you.
And thank you.
And did Town Administrator's report?
Yes, sir.
Selectmen's report, Julie?
I do not have anything.
Mary?
I do not either.
Don?
Spent the week in my cave.
Larry?
I spent my week away from Don's cave.
That's why you don't need a mask.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five-zero, Joe.
Thank you.
All documents?